Beaumont City Council, today's Tuesday, April eighteenth. Today's invocation will be given by Pastor James Barker of Greater Zion Missionary Baptist Church. Everyone, please silence your cell phones. Please stand and remain standing for our pledge if you so choose. Thank you.
God our Father, it is once again that we pause and we say thank you for this opportunity to approach your throne of grace and God, we thank you for your mercy. We thank you, dear God, for your power. And even in times like these, dear God, we thank you that all things work together. Then, God, we pray for our nation, we pray for our nation's leaders, we pray, dear God, statewide leaders, and then, God, we pray for our local assemblies. We pray for these council people, we pray for these meetings, and dear God, our city. Help us, dear God, to completely lean and depend on you in all that we do, all that we say, knowing that you know best. We ask it all in the name of our death conqueror, Christ Jesus the Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join us in our next. Where's the flag?
Oh, okay.
There's our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Muton.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Durio.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Today, we have four proclamations and one recognition. The first proclamation that will be read, I will read it, and it is the American Cancer Society Relay for Life. And it reads as follows. Whereas for a five-hour period, men, women, and children will gather to partake in a friendly competition designed to accomplish one goal, to say game over to cancer, and celebrate, remember, fight back. Whereas in 1986, the American Cancer Society adopted Relay for Life as their national signature event. Relay for Life is a unique, challenging, and fun concept developed to raise money for the American Cancer Society while recognizing cancer survivors and caregivers and heighten public awareness. Whereas in 2022, Relay for Life raised more than $300,000. This year, Relay for Life will be held on Friday, April 28th, 2023, from 5:00 to 10:00, and include teams of runners and walkers who will attempt to travel the most miles around the track at the Lamar University Thai Tarot Track Complex. While traveling, the participants are certain to have a fantastic time socializing and laughing while volunteering their time to help raise awareness and fight back against cancer. Whereas the American Cancer Society is fortunate, there are so many dedicated and compassionate southeast Texans who are willing to devote time and resources to this worthy cause. When an entire community pulls together to work towards a common goal, everyone benefits. Now therefore, I, Mayor Robin Muton of the City of Beaumont, am proud to recognize all of the many volunteers and participants from area of family corporations, hospitals, churches, and civic groups, and do hereby proclaim April the 28th, 2023, as Greater Golden Triangle Relay for Life Cancer Awareness Day in southeast Texas, and encourage all citizens to participate and support this worthy endeavor. Accordingly, I, Mayor Robin Muton, has hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city to be affixed and signed this day, April the 18th, 2022, 23. Mayor Robin Muton. And accepting this proclamation are Josh and Thomas Davis, event chairs, and Kathy Chesser, American Cancer Society Community Development Manager. If you will please come forward, accept this proclamation on behalf of the City of Beaumont. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Kathy, you've been eyeing that box. Don't act surprised. Thank you, Kathy. You've been eyeing that box.
About 10 o'clock with the gathering.
I will be.
Thank you.
That's okay, but I'll be by.
Sis, good to see you.
Look, AJ is marking his jersey. It's been his jersey. Virtue, virtue is to the badge.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Who has number two?
Me.
You have number three. You have number two.
What number you got? Four. Let's go. Four.
Okay. Yes, please.
So we just want to invite everybody and thank y'all for the support. So next Friday, April 28th, we'll honor our survivors, we'll remember those that we've lost to this deadly disease, and then join together to fight back so we can one day have a world without cancer. This event's been around for 35-plus years, and we continue to make strides in what we do with research and services and just the support for our community. And the one thing that, as a community, we have so much in common, but the one thing we have in common is the fact that we've all been touched by this disease. For me, I'm a cancer survivor, so it means so much to have people come out and support this event. This event saved my life 14 years ago. So because of the money raised, I am a survivor and I'm here today. So it means so much to have the support and to have everybody come out. So we invite y'all next week, 5:00 to 10:00 p.m., help us pack the track so we can raise as much money as possible to put into this disease. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you so much for all of the work that you're doing for our community. I will be on the track, but I promise you, it'll only be walking this time. Thank you. Our next proclamation will be read by Mayor Pro Tim Durio. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This proclamation is for the 75th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act, whereas April marks the anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act of 1968, which sought to eliminate discrimination in housing opportunities and to affirmatively further housing choices for all Americans. And whereas April also marks the anniversary of the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who was a champion of fair housing for all and whose hard work and leadership resulted in the passage of the act. And whereas the ongoing struggle for dignity and housing opportunity for all is not the exclusive province of the federal government, and whereas vigorous local efforts to combat discrimination can be as effective, if not more so, than federal efforts, and whereas illegal barriers to equal opportunity in housing, no matter how subtle, diminish the rights of all. Now therefore, Robin Muton, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, in pursuit of the shared goal and responsibility of equal housing opportunities for all men and women, do hereby join in a national celebration by proclaiming the month of April, 2023, as Fair Housing Month in Beaumont, and encourage all agencies, institutions, and individuals, public and private, in the city to abide by the letter and the spirit of the fair housing law. Accordingly, the mayor has hereunto set her hand and caused the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed, signed Robin Muton, April 18th, 2023. And accepting will be Ms. Jess Prince, City of Beaumont manager of Community Development Block Grant Housing Program.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sis. Thank you, Jess. Thank you. You glasses.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Staff would just like to thank the council for your continued support in our furtherance of equity in the city and celebrating Fair Housing Month.
Thank you, Jess. We appreciate the work that you're doing. Next, we'll have a proclamation recognizing the National Crime Victims Week, and it will be read by Councilmember Getz.
Thank you, Mayor. This proclamation does recognize National Crime Victims Week, and whereas the term victim is more than just a label and has legal standing and protections that go along with it. And whereas crime victims' rights acts passed here in Beaumont, Texas, and at the federal level guarantee victims the right to meaningfully participate and use their voice in the criminal justice process. And whereas victim service providers, advocates, law enforcement officers, attorneys, and other allied professionals can help survivors find their justice by enforcing these rights. And whereas the right to provide an impact statement ensures that victims' voices are considered in court during the sentencing and, when applicable, restitution processes. And whereas including and elevating the voices of survivors makes certain they are heard and seen and creates a path to forging and sustaining community trust. And whereas engaging survivors creates responses and services that are credible, meaningful, and centered on individual needs. And whereas survivors' lived experience can serve as a catalyst for implementing innovative programs, shifting existing programs in new directions, and changing policies or practices that prevent survivors from accessing services or pursuing justice. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit to listening to crime survivors in every space where decisions are made that could impact them. And whereas the City of Beaumont is hereby dedicated to amplifying the voices of survivors and creating an environment where survivors have the confidence that they will be heard, believed, and supported. And now therefore, Robin Muton, as Mayor of the City of Beaumont, does hereby proclaim the week of April 23rd and through the 29th, 2023, as National Crime Victims Rights Week, reaffirming the commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during National Crime Victims Rights Weeks and throughout the year, and expressing our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Now therefore, the mayor has hereunto set her hand and caused the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed, signed Mayor Robin Muton, April 18th, 2023. And accepting this proclamation will be Misty Craver, Jefferson County Director of the Victims Assistance Center. Misty, please come forward and receive your proclamation.
And bring anyone that you have with you. Thank you, Misty.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you for the work you did.
What's up? How you doing?
Thank you for the work you did.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. You stay up there.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's fine. Thank y'all very much. So I am Misty Craver. I'm the program director of the Jefferson County Victims Assistance Center, and I am a part of the Jefferson County Coalition for Victims of Crime, and we are the ones that will put on the candlelight vigil, the tree of angels, stuff like that. I'm going to let the people that are up here with me, I'm going to let them take a second and introduce themselves, okay? Just real quick, say who you are and where you're from.
I'm Trish Absher. I'm from the Garth House Mickey and Happy Children's Advocacy Center here in Beaumont.
I am Coralie Seals. I'm with Buckner Children and Family Services.
George Hartsfield with Buckner Children and Family Services.
I'm Courtney Radley. I'm a parent educator at Buckner.
I am Demetra Holloway from Surviving Parents of Southeast Texas.
And all of us together, along with many other agencies here in Jefferson County, not only try to offer a coordinated effort of services available to crime victims and ensure that they understand what's available to them, advocate for them, walk them through this process, but we also put on remembrance events. And one of those is next week for National Crime Victims Rights Week. On Tuesday, a week from today, April the 25th, we'll put on our candlelight vigil, 6:00 p.m. in the jury and paneling auditorium at the courthouse. Everybody's invited, victims of crime, family members, officials, anybody who wants to let victims know that Jefferson County is here for them, that we recognize them, that we want to support and empower them. I really appreciate the City of Beaumont, as always, for your support. We couldn't do this kind of stuff without your help. Thank y'all very much.
Misty, to you and everyone that stand behind you, I've seen your work, I've been in the courtrooms, I know what you do, and we thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Community thanks you.
Thank you. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Next, we have a recognition of Connect Realty, American Cancer Society, Connect the Community Event, and that proclamation will be read by Councilmember Neal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas founded in 2008, connectreality.com Inc. is a full-service brokerage with its headquarters located in the Woodlands, Texas, and provides services in over 60 markets across the country. And whereas the American Cancer Society has a vision to end cancer as we know it for everyone, they are improving the lives of cancer patients and their families through advocacy, research, and patient support to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to prevent, detect, treat, and survive cancer. And whereas on April 20th, 2023, members of the southeast Texas community, Connect Realty, and American Cancer, will be teaming up to host a fundraiser in the form of a gala entitled "Connect with the Community: An Evening of Glamour, Glitz, and Giving Back to Our Community." And whereas this year's event will be held in the luxurious Grand Sweet C Event Lounge in Beaumont, Texas. Connecting with Southeast Texas Gala is going to have a silent auction, entertainment, and ticket sales to raise money for cancer research and the overall support of the American Cancer Society. And whereas, we are excited to have the opportunity to support an organization that is taking a stand to fight a growing threat to many in the communities, if not the world. And whereas today, we recognize Connect Realty and hereby consider April 20th, 2023, Connect the Community Day, and congratulate Connect Realty on all that they have done to support the efforts of the American Cancer Society. Accordingly, the mayor has hereunto set her hand and calls the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed, signed Robin Muton, April 18th, 2023. And accepting will be Mike Deluna, Vice President of Southeast Texas Connect Realty.
Thank you. Mike, please come forward and bring your team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. This is a huge honor for us. First and foremost, we want to piggyback off of the American Cancer Society. You heard Kathy and Josh speak highly about their event, and we felt it in our heart to not only be a prevalent business in our community, but to give back to those that we serve. So this leadership team behind me is making all this possible, and I just want to give them an opportunity to say one or two words, but I just want to thank everybody for the support. And it's at Sweet C, so come out on Thursday and support the cause. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing the last weekend in April as Bikers Against Child Abuse Heroes Weekend. And reading that proclamation will be Councilmember Samuel.
Thank you, Mayor. It gives me great pleasure, as a fellow biker, to present this proclamation. Whereas the City of Beaumont is pleased to join Bikers Against Child Abuse Incorporated in celebrating the last weekend of April in 2023 as Bikers Against Child Abuse Weekend in Texas. And whereas Bikers Against Child Abuse is an international nonprofit organization dedicated to providing support and healing to children who have been abused, these young victims are known among the organization's members as heroes. And whereas this exemplary organization has instituted a number of initiatives to champion the victims of child abuse, notably adoption ceremonies at which an abused child is brought into the Bikers Against Child Abuse family. And whereas it is truly fitting that a weekend be set aside to pay tribute to the bravery and determination shown by the victims of child abuse in facing and overcoming their trauma. And whereas the City of Beaumont do hereby commend the members of Bikers Against Child Abuse Incorporated on their important work and their commitment in supporting the victims of child abuse, and extend to them the best wishes for a very successful Bikers Against Child Abuse Weekend. Now therefore, Mayor Robin Muton of the City of Beaumont has do proclaim April 28th through 30th, 2023, as Bikers Against Child Abuse Heroes Weekend, and commend you all on a great work that you do and you're continuing to do, and everything that you do for our community. Accordingly, the mayor is hereunto and set her hand and caused the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed, signed Robin Muton, April 18th, 2023. And accepting will be Mike Deluna, Vice President of Southeast Texas Connect Realty.
Thank you. Mike, please come forward and bring your team. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Appreciate you. Congratulations. You know. Yes, yes. Congratulations. Hey, buddy. Thank you. Everybody's saying, "I appreciate you."
Look, you get no attention. Thank you so much.
You stand in front of me, I'm kind of tall. I was going to ask you to respect.
Everybody ready? One, two, three. Perfect.
Right, say it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, council members, Bikers Against Child Abuse is an international 501(c)(3). It exists as a body of bikers to empower abused children to not feel afraid of the world in which they live. BACA has worked with abused children for over 25 years. We refer to these children as heroes. Our heroes are because they found the courage to speak out and put a stop to the abuse. Since April is Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month, we feel it is fitting that we pay tribute to these heroes. BACA would like to thank the council for issuing this proclamation so that our heroes can be recognized for their strength and courage. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. For those of you who were here for all of the proclamations, thank you for coming. We'll give you a few minutes to exit, but we appreciate you coming, and congratulations to each and every one of you. Thank you. Thank you. At this time, I would like to recognize Mr. Charlie Zack, if you'll come forward. Thank you, Charlie.
Hi, Mayor.
Hello.
Hi. I feel like I should have left with the bikers. I'm the most biker-looking guy.
All right, I'm glad you didn't leave because we have a charter review.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So am I, or am I, so should I just start, or?
Yes, sir.
Would you like an introduction, Charlie? I'm happy to give.
No, I can do it. I just didn't know the protocol, so.
No, no, it's all you.
You've been shy today, Charlie.
Okay, I'll be myself. Is that all right? My name is Charlie Zack. I am with the law firm Dent Navarro Roger Bernal Zack, and I've been engaged by the city to assist in a review of your Home Rule Charter. A little bit about me, so that you're not talking to a stranger, because I don't like people to have to talk to strangers. I don't like talking to strangers, so I like to get them to know them. And so a little bit about me. Born in Champaign-Urbana, moved to New Braunfels, Texas when I was six, lived there for the most part of my entire life, except for when I spent six years in the Navy, and that's where I got married, and that's where I had a kid. And I don't know if that's why she lives in LA as an actress and a model now, but don't hold that against me, that I have a kid that lives in LA. I was city attorney for the City of New Braunfels for six years, about three years after I got out of law school, and then I joined the firm in 2006, and I've been with the firm since 2006, and I'm a shareholder with the firm. Why was I engaged to assist with Home Rule Charters? When I got my master's degree from, I guess it was at that time Texas State University, I had to do an applied research project, and I reviewed every single Home Rule Charter in the state of Texas for that applied research project. And I have to admit, I did it for selfish purposes because I thought, well, maybe that might help me in my work, and sure enough, it did, because I've been reviewing assistant cities with Home Rule Charters ever since that time. I engaged, I get engaged regularly to review charters, to assist cities on initiative and referendum issues, on litigation issues and charter interpretation, drafting first charters, and amending charters. This year alone, I'm assisting, I assisted two cities in putting, hopefully putting two charters on the ballot, and I've done three charter reviews in the last seven or eight months, not counting this one. And so I know a little bit about Home Rule Charters, and so that's why I was engaged. It's my understanding that this, and this is just my understanding, that this body would like to have a review of the charter done. It was my recommendation, in order to get anything on the ballot by November, you should have a very focused commission review, and that is, give them a charge. And by I mean, give them a charge, determine what it is specifically you'd like for them to look at, ask them to look at that, and then they can look at that and come back and bring you recommendations. Remembering this, that with respect to this type of review, the commission is simply reviewing and bringing back recommendations. Any decisions with respect to what should go on the ballot?
Thank you. At this time, I would like to recognize Mr. Charlie Zack, if you'll come forward. Thank you, Charlie.
Hi, Mayor.
Hello.
Hi. I feel like I should have left the bikers. I'm the most biker-looking guy.
But I'm glad you didn't leave because we have a charter review.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So am I, or my, so should I just start, or?
Yes, sir.
Would you like an introduction, Charlie? I'm happy to give.
No, I can do it. I just didn't know the protocol, so.
No, no, it's all you.
You're being shy today, Charlie.
Okay, I'll be myself. Is that all right? My name is Charlie Zack. I am with the law firm Dent Navarro Roger Bernal Zack, and I've been engaged by the city to assist in a review of your home rule charter. A little bit about me, so that you're not talking to a stranger, because I don't like people to have to talk to strangers. I don't like talking to strangers, so I like to get them to know them. And so a little bit about me. Born in Champaign-Urbana, moved to New Braunfels, Texas when I was six, lived there for the most part of my entire life, except for when I spent six years in the Navy. And that's where I got married, and that's where I had a kid. And I don't know if that's why she lives in LA as an actress and a model now, but don't hold that against me, that I have a kid that lives in LA. I was city attorney for the city of New Braunfels for six years, about three years after I got out of law school, and then I joined the firm in 2006, and I've been with the firm since 2006, and I'm a shareholder with the firm. Why was I engaged to assist with home rule charters? When I got my master's degree from, I guess it was at that time Texas State University, I had to do an applied research project, and I reviewed every single home rule charter in the state of Texas for that applied research project. And I have to admit, I did it for selfish purposes because I thought, well, maybe that might help me in my work, and sure enough, it did, because I've been reviewing assistant cities with home rule charters ever since that time. I engaged, I get engaged regularly to review charters, to assist cities on initiative and referendum issues, on litigation issues and charter interpretation, drafting first charters, and amending charters. This year alone, I'm assisting, I assisted two cities in putting, hopefully putting two charters on the ballot, and I've done three charter reviews in the last seven or eight months, not counting this one. And so I know a little bit about home rule charters, and so that's why I was engaged. It's my understanding that this, and this is just my understanding, that this body would like to have a review of the charter done. It was my recommendation, in order to get anything on the ballot by November, you should have a very focused commission review, and that is, give them a charge. And by I mean, give them a charge, determine what it is specifically you'd like for them to look at, ask them to look at that, and then they can look at that and come back and bring you recommendations. Remembering this, that with respect to this type of review, the commission is simply reviewing and bringing back recommendations. Any decisions with respect to what should go on the ballot, what should not go on the ballot, the language and how it is worded for the ballot is purely within your discretion and within your decision-making. The other thing that I will be doing, I did a brief review, and now I've started a more in-depth review. I don't know if you know, but your charter was adopted in about 1947. It has not, looks like it has not been updated too much since that time. There are several provisions that are in that are inconsistent with state law, so we really need to get that on the ballot and get yourself consistent with state law. Your charter is forty-some pages long. When I do charters now, they're more like ten or fifteen pages long, which, and in my review, there's a lot of things in there that are just not necessary to be in your charter. And so I will be bringing back recommendations on items to clean your charter up, to make it more readable, to make it more accessible to your public, for your, for your community to read and understand, make sure that, at least from my standpoint, we don't have interpretation disputes with respect to language in the charter so that it's easy to read. So I'll be bringing that to you, separate and apart from any independent review of the charter commission. It is also my understanding, and I think I'm free to say this, that we're from this, I think we've gotten some ideas from this body. We may want to take a look at whether or not term limits is something we want to look at. There's a variety of ways to look at term limits. Most people think when they think of term limits, they think the President of the United States, two terms, and you're out for life. Most cities don't have term limits like that, because most cities in Texas are smaller communities, not huge million population where we have lots of folks to choose from and run. And so most cities do term limits in some form or fashion of, hey, you can do two, three terms in a row, then you gotta sit out for a year. And after you sit out for a year, then, you know, you come back, or you have to sit out for a term, and then you come back. So there's a variety of different ways of, of looking at term limits. I also understand we may want to look at changing the number of years that a term lasts. Currently, you serve two-year terms. Is that an accurate statement? And moving that from three-year terms to four-year terms, there's some logistical issues associated with that. I recommend staggered terms when we do that. If you do three years, it's, you should absolutely do staggered terms so you have more consistency in elected officials over time for institutional knowledge. And then we have to then figure out how those terms play out. And then also, if you go to three-year terms, there's some requirements under the Texas Constitution that we have to ensure that we comply with, with respect to elections. For example, plurality elections is no longer authorized if you're three-year terms. You have to be elected by a majority vote. So some things like that. With that said, I'm happy to answer any questions about the review process, about me, about, not necessarily your charter specifically, because I've started digging into it, but I don't have it memorized by any stretch of the imagination.
And before you jump too far into questions, the purpose of having a charter review committee would be to allow for buy-in for council purposes, and Charlie, if you could just speak to that process, it has been successful in making sure some of the items that may not be able to be fully explained by council and staff, once it's placed on the ballot, will be able to be advocated on behalf of those individuals who serve on the committee. As council is aware, at our last charter review, there were several items that were placed on the ballot that were meant to kind of clean up the language and take the place of, you know, making sure the charter was in compliance with state law that failed, largely in part because, I believe, the community fully didn't understand what those items were. And once an item is placed on the ballot, as council is aware, council is no longer able to speak for, against, and staff is no longer to speak for or against that item. So having community involved in the process early on will increase the success of having those items passed.
Yeah, I agree with that, and thank you for bringing that up. It was my recommendation that the committee size, you get too big of a commission, committee, whatever you want to call it, and it becomes unworkable. But you want to have something large enough that you've got appropriate stakeholders and input for purposes of having a valid, a valid discussion regarding whether or not a particular amendment should go on the ballot. And remember, that's what the discussion is about. It's not whether or not, and this is what I tell all my charter review committees, this is not a discussion about whether or not you personally are in favor or against a particular item that may go on the ballot. The decision-making is, and debate is, is this something that is important enough to the community that it be placed on the ballot for the community to make the decision as to whether or not it should be adopted or rejected? Because ultimately, this, this, this document, your charter, is a constitution for your form of government and how your government operates, and the people are the ones that get to make that decision.
Well, Madam Attorney basically said lots of what I was gonna say. I'll start off by saying I'm a big fan of term limits, and I have been ever since I first got elected. So I'll be interested to see what the committee comes back on that. The other thing, I just kind of want to echo what Madam Attorney said, that 2019, we tried to do a pretty in-depth review of the charter, and we put several things on the ballot to be voted on, and several of them were shot down by the community. How do you recommend us put that out there and be able to sell it to the community in a legal manner?
Good question. So my recommendation is always to do a tour. While the city officials cannot, well, individually, obviously, you can advocate for or against individually, as, under state law, I'm not familiar with your local regulations, but under state law, you just can't spend public dollars advocating for or against. So I always recommend a, sort of a tour, so to speak, of the charter amendments. Church groups, homeowners, influential homeowners associations, rotary clubs, lion clubs, put together a presentation that is not an advocacy for or against the measures or the ballot propositions, but rather an informational sessions, some town hall meetings done, where people, where the changes can be explained, the reason behind the changes, the impact of the changes. All of those are valid discussions to have with public dollars. What we can't do is put, please vote for this, or you should vote for this, why, but we can absolutely explain the impact of the amendment, the reason why it's being placed on the ballot, and those types of things. And so I always recommend a tour, doing some town hall meetings, to make sure you get the word out with respect to the reasons for these. And then making sure that we word our ballot propositions in a way that makes clear the subject matter and purpose for the amendment.
So just to clarify on that, we can publicly speak for or against it?
In your individual, in your, in your, now I'm gonna defer to your city attorney. Don't listen to my legal advice, but the law says you can't spend public dollars.
Yes, so you can't advocate from the dais, you can't use staff to do it, but if you attend a town hall meeting, you're speaking in your capacity, you can speak as to your beliefs on that in a private capacity. I personally would prefer council not speak in their official capacity for or against an item that is on the ballot, but to just give factual background information.
Can we use personal phones?
I'm gonna have you defer to somebody who knows and understands election laws and how we spend dollars. I don't, that's not within the scope of my knowledge, but.
Thank you.
We just, what we cannot do is spend public dollars advocating for or against, and that has been, that has been interpreted to mean, you know, advocating from the dais, advocating where public dollars are spent. That is not something that we are authorized to do as a municipality, as a local government.
But a town hall is allowable, correct?
We can absolute, we can, a town hall meeting or a, that the city pays for, is absolutely allowable, so long as we're not advocating for or against.
Right, so you're asking, a lot of our town hall meetings and even neighborhood association meetings are probably held in, in public places, buildings owned by the city. So at that point, again, I would just ask that council not advocate for or against, which is what Mr. Zack said, is having an informational presentation that's neutral and more educational than, than anything else. So that, and then, of course, I would prefer it happen before it's placed on the ballot.
Yes, and then, of course, the, so if the rotary, if, if, if the rotary, if the rotary club would like to have, you know, staff come to the rotary club and do a, we would, if we're gonna do a tour, I would recommend we put up, we put up, we put a presentation together, we, we, in advance, we have a plan with respect to the explanations, and say, for example, the rotary club, or a church group, or an HOA association would like, whoever you dedicate to do that presentation, to come give that presentation, if a council member happens to be at that rotary club meeting in their individual capacity, they could certainly advocate for or against it.
But staff cannot.
Not with staff, not if they're on their time, and not if they're being paid. No, sir, they cannot.
Oh, can we?
I'm sorry. Councilmember Samuel.
Okay.
I'm sorry, and I'll come to you next. Councilmember Samuel.
Yes, it's my understanding, simply, individual council members in their official capacity cannot be an advocate. If we're in a facility that is by, owned or operated by the city, and we are representing the council, we can't. But as an individual out in public, you can be an advocate on your own, as long as it's not in your official, official capacity. Anytime there's more than three members of council, you're in your official capacity if the meeting is, is that correct?
I'm gonna give you a very legal answer, so don't be mad at me. Yes and no. If you are out in public and you are approached as Councilman Samuel, and they say Councilman Samuel, or you're wearing a Ward III shirt, even if you're at the picnic with your kids and they approach you and they ask you a question about the ballot, I'm gonna say that your response is as Councilman Samuel. Now, if Alden Samuel is attending church, and Alden Samuel is approached by a fellow congregant, and they said, you know, have a question, it is on you to use your best judgment if they're asking you as Attorney Alden Samuel or as Councilman Alden Samuel. Very lawyer.
But again, you're making a distinction between advocating for it as opposed to just giving information, factual information, that this is what's on the ballot, and this is what.
Yeah, you can, you can give factual information about it, but he was talking about taking a personal stance. And so at that point, it's incumbent upon each of you to use your best judgment as to whether or not, and how you respond in that.
Mayor Proton.
Is it okay for us, two questions, will you be advising our commission?
Yes, sir.
Is it okay for us to talk to our appointees to the commission as to what our preferences are for these charter changes?
I definitely think that you should appoint someone who you think would represent your interests as well as your wards' interests. Each councilperson or each member of council has a, one appointee to the board, and then there will be four members at large that will be voted on by council that will represent at-large positions, so to speak, for a total of 11 members to the commission. The city manager and I will serve as ex officio, which means we will have no vote on the commission, on the committee, and Mr. Zack will lead the committee in terms of wrangling and making sure that they stay focused on the charges.
Okay.
City, city manager and then councilmember Turner.
Just like that, Mayor, and I'm speaking between two attorneys and a city attorney, but in my previous experience with charter changes and actually going through charter changes, there was a creation of a PAC, and that, we'll have to see how the city attorney feels about that. But citizens created a PAC that were able to go out and promote the charter and promote changes, provide dollars for signage and billboards and everything else. So instead of the council being able to do that, there was a third party that was created by citizens that went out and promoted the passage of the, of the charter itself. So there are other vehicles too to promote, promote it.
Councilmember Turner, then Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Well, I'm gonna take heed to saying what I'm in favor of, because I know we're in the city facility, so I'm not gonna touch that, but one thing you stated was, three-year terms, it has to be a supermajority vote. Currently, we have at-large seats that are the top two vote-getters. How would that affect our current setup with city council? Would it still be the top two vote-getters, or would it be, would we have to separate the at-larges? Like, how does it work?
So it's not a supermajority, it's a simple majority.
Okay.
So, so if you go from two-year terms to three-year terms, and you have at-large members, which you have, those at-large members will have to, will have to be by place. So it'll be at-large place one, at-large place two, then individuals will choose which at-large place they want to run for, and if there are three people running for that at-large place, and one person gets 45% of the vote, and the other two split it, the two top vote-getters would then have a runoff to determine who would win the seat.
So basically, the at-large seats, to my understanding, would be set up just like the ward seat and the mayor's seat?
With one exception, the, my, tell me if I'm wrong, but wards are, you have to be from the ward in order to be eligible to be elected to that ward seat. The difference would be, it would still be the at-large community, and the individuals would be able to choose which at-large seat within the community they would like to run for, but for purposes of place. But it's also my understand, do you, I don't know, I don't remember, are, does your charter require a majority vote for your wards as well, or is it plurality?
No, it's majority vote, so everybody has received.
So then, yes, from that perspective, also, the at-large seats, the individual, you couldn't have, so currently, you could have eight people run, and somebody could get 30% of the vote, and they would be, right, they would be the at-large seat. That wouldn't be able to occur anymore. If you had eight people run, whoever the top two vote-getters would be, would then have a runoff, and the person between those two who won that vote would, would take the seat.
Yes, sir, so that would only take place if the charter committee and the council voted to attempt to do three years versus two years. If it stayed at two years, it wouldn't be an issue, but if that happened with three years, that would be an issue.
That would be an issue, it's a constitutional issue, yes, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to be transparent, when I heard you say supermajority, I know our situation is a little bit unique in Beaumont, even when I ask other cities, you know, it's different. Most people do have places, that's why I wasn't sure.
Yeah, and, well, every, every community that has three-year terms is gonna have, is gonna have places, regardless if it's an at-large place or if it's a district place, because of the majority requirement to be elected to office, and that's, that's under the state constitution.
Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thank you for helping us through this process. You mentioned the length of our charter. I'm assuming a longer charter is somewhat antiquated, and I'm assuming that the trend is for cities go into something shorter. And then, in your experience, in my, I'm trying to, there's a natural tendency for people to be somewhat suspicious of government when you go to take something like this on. This has to be a daunting task, to go from that, you said something forty-something pages?
Yes, forty-some pages.
To down to fifteen, so there's a, you're talking about cutting out over half.
Well, I don't know yet how much would be cut out.
Well, and it may not, but just with the context of what we're discussing, in your experience, I mean, is this, we're gonna have to really make sure that we have some clear communication, I'm assuming, when we take this on.
So, let me help Charlie for one second. Throw me the ball. A lot of what's in our charter currently, again, doesn't need to be there, just because it's not consistent with state law. And so that eliminates several pages. Also, there's a lot of things that were required to be in home rule charters previously that the legislature has now said is unnecessary, one of which is like outlining your boundaries, correct? And so that, again, is one of the things that is in our charter, but unnecessary, and it's several pages. And so when you, when you talk about shortening the charter, we're not necessarily talking about taking out things that are necessary for the governance of the city, what we're talking about is removing items that are no longer required by the legislation.
Yeah, and I would assume that we're not gonna take out anything that is necessary.
That's correct.
But it's just, we're gonna have to do, we're gonna have to do, it's, it's obvious, we're gonna have to do a great job at just communicating to the citizens what Madam Attorney just said, that we're cleaning this up and bringing it into alignment with state law, but it just, wow.
So, yeah, so I'm gonna follow up. Thank you, that's absolutely accurate. So there are, there are some items in your charter that are inconsistent with state law, and we should get those out. There are also multiple provisions in there that are just not necessary to be in your charter, and there, a lot of it is just grants of power. And so think about this, so in 1947, the understanding of home rule charters was still pretty young, in the court system, in the state, because home rule charters were not a thing until because home rule charters were not a thing until nineteen twelve. So, what is that? I'm not a mathematician. What is that, thirty-five years or something like that? Thirty-seven years? So, no, nobody really knew what needed to be in the charter. Well, nowadays, we know. It's been a much longer period of time, um, clearly over a hundred years since home rule was adopted in the state of Texas. The cases have fleshed out what's required to be in the charter, what's legally required. And all of those grants of po-, of power that you see in your charter, the city shall have the power to regulate streets, the city shall have the power to do this, the city shall have the pow- Your grant, your general, you have a general grant of power that is probably this long. And then you have a bunch of other specific grants of power that are probably e- each individually this long. None of that is necessary to be in your charter. Your grant of power can simply be four sentences, maybe five sentences. And so when you're making those types of changes, you're not doing anything substantive to your charter. You're just making it much more concise and consistent with the current, with the way we now know home rule charters operate and exist. And let me add to this. Every single time, no exaggeration, I get in front of a city council or a home rule charter committee, and they start saying, and they start adding up how many propositions are gonna be on the ballot. You know, once you get to about ten or twelve, people start going, oh, nobody's gonna understand this. This is gonna, this is, people are just gonna start voting, no, this, no one's gonna understand what we're doing and how we're doing it. In my experience, however long I've been doing this, twenty-some years, that is never the case. I've had situations where we've had twenty-five propositions on a ballot for a home rule charter change. And the, we'll, the, the numbers on how things get adopted, the easy things, you know, it passes by eighty-five or ninety percent. There's always those folks who are gonna vote no to everything. And then there's some that are a little more controversial, and it barely passes. And then there's some that, that barely don't pass. And then there's some that are hugely defeated. Your residents and your citizens, especially if, if you have an open, transparent process like we're planning to have, they will be educated, and they will read the ballot propositions, and they will understand what they're voting on. And I can honestly tell you, I have, now, I hate to say it, because I'm probably gonna get jinxed, but I've never had a ballot prop-, that I've assisted with in placing on the ballot, a ballot proposition defeated that was simply for the purposes of cleaning up the charter or getting things out that were inconsistent with state law. Not one time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Now, I say that, but of course, now I'm, I'm probably gonna get jinxed, so knock on some wood, I guess.
Thank you, Charlie. Uh, Mayor Protim Duria.
Uh, just two quick questions.
Yes, sir.
Um, what, what kind of time constraints are we on as far as getting this on the November ballot?
What's the deadline to order the election?
August twelfth.
August twelfth, August twelfth. And you'll, you'll hear different opinions. I have not spoke to Sheree about this, so I don't know her opinion on it. We'll get together. Uh, but I am of the opinion that you can actually order the election on August seventeenth, and then we can add the ballot measures a little bit later if need to.
So the clerk hasn't given us any deadlines past August twelfth, but we do need to, council will need to be put, placed out on the agenda prior to August twelfth to call for the election, to plan for it. And it has been our custom in the past to, um, not wait till the last minute, but give ourselves a little cushion to allow for that language to be submitted. Typically, it's almost, like, almost thirty days later, prior to the election, so that gives us some little time.
So, we agree. You have two lawyers in the room, and they agree.
It's a rare occasion.
Al- also, um, you, you mentioned that once it, uh, went onto the ballot, we couldn't advocate for or against it. When is that official time, when it's on the ballot? Is that when we, when it's on the agenda and we vote to put it on the ballot, or?
Correct. So once, so once we vote to put that language on the ballot, that would, in my opinion, start when council could not advocate for or against an item.
Because right now, you don't have a ballot item to advocate for or against. You're just having discussion with respect to what and how.
Any other comments? Well, Charlie, I look forward to working with you again. Charlie, uh, chairs, uh, he-chair and our co-chair, um, a committee. And so I look forward to working with you again, Charlie.
We, uh, the mayor is a wonderful co-chair for our, uh, we were both appointed to the TML Constitutional Review Committee, so we're actually reviewing the TML Constitution right now. I'm not sure, I was in the Navy for six years. Anybody in the Navy? You know, do you remember what Navy stands for? Never Again Volunteer Yourself? So somehow I got volunteered for that, and, and, but it's a great project, and it's, of course, wonderful working with you, Mayor.
Actually, they, in the Navy, they called it Volantoe.
Yes, sir. Glad to see you.
Charlie, thank you for, uh, your service to our country, and again, I look forward to working with you.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
So Mayor and Council, the, oh, yes, sorry. Mayor and Council, the next step would be for, uh, staff to bring back, uh, two items that will, uh, allow you to create this committee, and then, uh, items that will allow you to appoint your representative to the board, and then an item that will require you to nominate from a list that is compiled, uh, both from your recommendations and the recommendations of staff, those four members to serve at large. Um, and that will be, um, at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Now's the time for any citizen who would like to have public comment. If you haven't already done so, uh, if you haven't already filled out the green slip, I don't know where they're located here.
They're in the back.
Okay, they're located outside of the door. Um, fill out the green slip, hand it to the clerk. She'll call your name if you would like to have public comment.
Uh, Kenneth Earls, twelve sixty-five Condon, Beaumont, Texas, speaking on the consent agenda, items B, D, and H. I'll just have to use my phone as a timer, Mayor.
I'd like to change it. Um, I wanna talk about the last item that the young man talked about.
The charter review.
The charter review.
I'm sorry, before you start your comments, because that's not a post-it item for, that would have to be reserved for public comment, unless the mayor wants to.
Okay, if you'll fill out another green slip, you could come back and speak.
I can call him. He doesn't have to. He actually has public comments checked, so he will be called to come back at the end of the meeting.
So you could speak on it then, Mr. Earls.
Okay, um, the first item I wanna talk about is this industri- industrial plant that's being proposed. I'd like to find out where it's gonna be located. Um, I wanna know about the environmental studies that's going, that has been taken on this particular plant. And who's responsible if there's an environmental accident? Will the city be responsible for part of what's going on, what happens? And will they be responsible for the other half? Uh, as you know, we've had cancer, this city has cancer clusters. And because we live in this environment, we have cancers that happen nowhere else but here in Beaumont, Houston, or Lake Charles. What is the city gonna do about, about those? And are we gonna ask the question, do we wanna have another plant here that could potentially put us at harm? I, I know that the company that, uh, that's bringing this forward is from Pennsylvania. Pennsylvania, as you know, right now, they don't allow it. They wanna get rid of all the chemical plants if they possibly can. And are they coming here for that one reason? The dirty environment that we now have here in, in this part of the country? And are we willing to, uh, place our people in harm's way? I, myself personally, I left Beaumont because of the environment. I moved somewhere else because of the environment. The size of, the city of Beaumont should be three times the size it is. Most of my classmates never moved, never moved back to Beaumont. They went to Los Angeles, Boston, New York, New York City, Washington, and other places to, to get away from this environment. So, if it's about the dollars and cents, you'll probably make more with us moving back here because we're trying to clean up this area. Basically, that's what, what I have to say today. But I am gonna be paying attention to anything that come into this city that's not clean. Uh, plants and others. Um, yes, we wanna make money, but not at the risk of the, the health of our citizens. And, and that's basically what I have to say today.
Thank you, Mr. Earls.
Addie Allen, ninety-six ninety-five, grass, Beaumont, Texas, uh, consent agenda, items B, D, and H.
Good afternoon, council, uh, manager, uh, mayor. And I'll speak on charter later, as you've told the gentleman before me. Um, of course, you know, I'm talking about sidewalks. And I see under B, uh, the Cat Marsh Sidewalk Trail Project, and I think that's in wetlands, I'm not sure. So is that meaning you're gonna put cement in wetlands? I don't know all of the ramifications of that, but, um, I know that the city traditionally goes with the lowest bid. So are we gonna be looking at change orders when all that stuff is manifested itself? That's my question. The other thing is, um, the industrial, Arqema, is that correct, Arqema? I'm, I'm wondering about safety as well. Uh, I sat on a board, um, fence side, a board for El, Attacam. And I know that there, we're in a cancer belt. There's cancers that are unknown anywhere else but in this area. So, I don't know where the industrial unit is. I've seen it on prior agendas, but I don't know where it's been identified. Do I live in the industrial district? Where is it? It's unclear in the background information where this industrial district is. So can that be shared? I'd like to know today, um, because it keeps coming up. Um, and as well, the lobbyists. I know, saw that there was a letter from Mr. Giglio, I guess, for a renewed contract. So when we select lobbyists, are we continuing since nineteen eighty-one to get lobbyists? Or are we looking at, um, somebody traditionally from Beaumont, and a councilperson knows them, and that's how it's secured? Because I know that the National League of Cities, the Conference of Mayors, are all entities that, um, are lobbyists for cities. So we're paying a lot of money, and I'm not against lobbyists, but we never get reports on any of it. And if we're going to do economic development, then I would like to know, what are they doing for us? We were harping on our bond rating. So, if, if we have a good bond rating, and how do I wanna say this? And we have competent city council people? So we're feeding a lobbyist to say what we need to have said in Washington or Austin. But when do the citizens have privy to hearing some of this information? I know that we don't know everything, or we need to know everything. But I've never heard that shared. I've never heard from the committees that, and this is doing a paradigm shift, that are put up for committees, what are they doing for the city? So, I just would like to know, Mr. City Manager, you get reports, but we're not privy to knowing anything until it's up for a vote. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
I thank you. I would like to read at the close of the city council meeting that we will hold an executive session to consider, related to, contemplate, or pending litigation in accordance with section five five one dot zero seven one of the Government Code, the claim of Joseph Guidry, the claim of Kevin and Patricia Joseph, the International Association of Fire Fighters, Local Three Ninety-Nine versus the City of Beaumont, Kenneth Williams in his official capacity as ci- city manager, and Earl White in his official capacity as fire chief, cause number D dash two one zero nine five zero, and Tori Frazier versus City of Beaumont, cause number E dash two zero six nine one nine. Thank you. At this time, I will call for a motion for the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. On B, um, we got two bids that are within five percent of one another. What's the threshold on that for, um, a ward into a local vendor?
I think it's a hundred thousand dollars, uh, has to be under a hundred thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Neil, then Mayor Protim Duria.
Yes, I'm, I'll be Taylor.
Councilmember Turner. I'm sorry.
Uh, I'd just like to compliment staff on item number E. Kenneth, you're in the audience. I, I like the fact that staff is aggressively going after grant funding. It's a lot of money that's out there. I like when we take advantage of it. Uh, hopefully, soon we can see, uh, maybe a full-time grant position coming fruition in the city of Beaumont. I think that'd be a good idea. But I just want to compliment staff on always going after those grants. I think it's a lot of free money and opportunity out there. It's just simply us going after them. So every time I see them, I just wanna compliment y'all.
Thank you. Mayor Protim?
Oh, yeah, also, um, item E, what, what exactly would that grant money be used for?
If you'll come forward, uh, Mr. Coleman, Director of Health Department.
Item E, which grant is that one?
That's the one for one hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, that's Public Health Preparedness Grant, and we typically get that grant every year. That's to assist the city as well as the Emergency Operations Center, uh, when we have evacuations. But also, uh, to assist what we just went through with COVID. So any type of public health emergency that affects the city, those funds are used to assist the city in that.
All right, thank you. And also, Mayor, uh, item G, that grant also, um, what exactly is it gonna be used for? That's, I think that's something with police department?
Chief Ogdencheck is coming forward. Catherine.
Mayor and Council, this, uh, particular grant was, uh, brought to us by the U.S. Attorney's Office of the Eastern District as to apply for, uh, funding to help contribute towards our goal of going against a violent crime. And so we, this is the third year that we've been able, well, two years we actually got funding, we're applying for a third year. And we use that for our special emphasis on, uh, violent crime initiative to pay for overtime.
Thank you. Any other questions, or?
That's all.
One question. Councilmember Turner.
No, not from, not from the side.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I also looked at, uh, item number B as well, and I, I am not opposed when it's that close. And, you know, it's local, I'm not opposed to, you know, looking at that when it's that close. So, similar to what Taylor brought up earlier, you know, I think it's good, because you look at the return on our investment. I think that revenue... I think that revenue with a company that's actually in Beaumont that pays taxes out here, you know, they eat out here, get gas out here. I think, you know, it'd be a good return. So that's just my opinion on it. I'm not opposed to it.
As I understand it, there is proposed legislation in this session for that amount to be raised. And I know a term of $1 million was thrown around out there. But the reality right now under state law is that the dollar amount is so low for construction that it very rarely comes into play when it comes to public works projects. But if that legislation would pass, if it was in effect now, say, we would be able to use local bidder exception for a project of this size if that was raised from 100,000 to 1 million.
Thank you, Bart.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Mr. City Manager, may I have the reading?
Mayor, can you?
I'm sorry, there was an oversight prior to us going into.
The agenda and the consent agenda comments.
And so we overlooked someone and they would like to speak.
Jennifer, is that Trinbeth?
Yes.
Trinbeth, 2020 Chevy Chase, Beaumont, Texas, item number four.
Thank you.
Hi. Thank y'all for allowing me to speak. I'm here to ask you to support item number four. It's the application for a state historical marker to be placed at the site of the George O'Brien Millard statue, which is at the corner of Bowie and Pearl on the Art Studio, Art Museum grounds. I'm kind of in a unique position. I'm the coordinator of the Jefferson County Historical Commission. I am also a Millard family descendant. The statue has existed since the early 1900s. It was actually a kind of crowdsourced community effort three years after his death. He served the city as a business owner, a real estate broker, a city alderman, and a devoted member of the First Methodist Church. But his longest lasting contribution really was his work as the president of the Board of Trustees of the City of Beaumont Schools. It was said that he besieged the city council for funds to carry on the work. And wherever money was found, there was Mr. Millard petitioning for the schools. Right now, the statue sits alone. There's a small plaque with his name, but there is no explanation as to why we have this statue, how it got here, why he is, you know, being honored. So I'd just like to ask, both as a family descendant and as a representative of the Historical Commission, that you all consider voting in favor of our application to put a historical marker on that property that would explain to people who he was and what he did. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So.
So we can move into the regular agenda.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, if you'll go ahead and read item number one, please.
Yes, Mayor. Council considered resolution awarding multiple contracts for the purchase of inventory materials to be used in the Water Utilities Department. This is basically our annual contract to buy supplies for our water system repair, which includes couplings, fittings, fire hydrants, et cetera, that we use for repair. The recommended bid is for Rural Pipe and Supply of $2,244,000. And it comes from the Water Utilities Fund. And staff has recommended approval of the resolution.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor? Is there any discussion? Councilmember Neil, then Councilmember Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, can you clarify? You said to Rural Pipe and Supply, but the main portion of the contract should be going to Corin Maine.
Okay, did I get the wrong one? Okay. To the responsible little bidder of Corin Maine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So actually, there's several bids based on the number of, so if you read the actual resolution, Corin Maine receives Sections 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 11, 12, 13 and 15. Corbin's of Beaumont receives Sections 10 and 14. Rural Pipe and Supply of Jasper for Sections 8.
Councilmember Turner.
On this particular item, it says manhole component. And it's a significant difference. One bid was $130,727, the other one was $667,887. But something that's significant, could somebody kind of speak to what a manhole component is and what would it actually do?
Yeah, I think Mike Harris is here. All these materials are being used in his department.
Good afternoon, Council. The manhole components that we buy are like the actual manholes, fiberglass manholes, reins, covers, risers, things of that nature that go into the manholes when we put them in. The reason why the bid this year is so high, we really don't have any idea. We turn the, we send the contract out to the vendors and the vendors bid all on the same thing. Some of the explanations may be they, the vendor themselves changed manufacturers. So the manufacturer they're using now charges them a higher price. So they have to move the price on to us, like I said. All the vendors bid on the same item. So there's really not a good explanation of why such a difference.
Okay, so one, yeah, one was roughly $130,000. It was a difference, so we should be still comfortable within that $130,000 range.
Correct, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number two, please?
Item two, Council considered resolution authorizing the city manager to water contract to Texas Drainage, Inc., a waller for the physical year 23 citywide ditching program phase 1B. And I'm going to refer to Mr. Buck Koyak to explain it.
Yes, this continues the new program to mop out all of the ditches citywide, return them to their designed grade, and also replace and reset any culverts that are three inches or more out of grade. The plan was and remains right now to do 20% of the city a year. So that's 20% of each of the wards each year with the goal to be finished ditching all of the ditches in the city over a five-year period. This particular award is to complete the 20% of year one. So in order to do this work, we have to go out and survey all of the ditches and the culverts. Because that work takes quite a bit of time. When we finished the first two wards, we went ahead and released that and started ditching those two wards, which has been completed as we did the survey for these two wards. And right now, we're working on the next 20% in terms of the survey work.
Thank you. Any other comment? Councilmember Turner?
I had a question when we're talking about the ditches. We get a lot of comments and calls about the water that sits after heavy rains, even in the areas that we already graded, like I think the Millie area. We get some calls about.
I'm sorry, and I hate to do this, but we really do need to have a motion on the floor before we go too deep into discussion.
Okay.
I apologize.
So move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor? Go ahead.
Well, just to continue my question, and I appreciate you, Madam Attorney, for the correction. But how do we kind of address citizens' concerns? Is it something that we can do with the grading or is it something standard? Can we kind of speak to that?
In terms of ditching outside of this contract?
The ditching, once, like, within the contract. Like, let's just say we graded ditches in the Millie area. But we still have residents that say, well, the water is still sitting. Is that standard or is it supposed to flow?
It will flow. You will, we're not resetting every single culvert throughout the city. We're only resetting culverts that are three inches or more out of grade. So the goal is to restore flow through these ditches to their design capacities and to minimize the amount of water that remains after a storm to where it'll dry up in a moderate period of time. But there's no way we really have to eliminate any ponding of any level whatsoever because we're not resetting every single culvert within the city. The costs are just too high. You may have, you know, if you have a culvert that's, say, two inches out of grade, you may have a small puddle by that culvert within that ditch. So we can't eliminate it entirely.
I just, I think it was important that that was stated because some people are under the impression when we're doing these projects, it'll eliminate it entirely. So I think, I'm glad that was clarified.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Duria.
Yeah, Bart, I saw on the news the other night where Orange received a grant, I think for a couple million dollars, and they're going to start concreting their grass ditches. Is that something we ever thought about doing here in Beaumont? Or would that be better? I also spoke to someone, they said the grass ditches are really better because not only does the water flow, but it also soaks down into the ground.
The larger ditches in Beaumont are really maintained by DD6. So if you have a concrete line ditch within the city limits of Beaumont, those are DD6 ditches that they maintain. We, all of our ditches are mainly the smaller residential ditches. And really, it's, there's a balance of cost there. I think to concrete in all of those ditches would be cost prohibitive, whether it would be worthwhile or not, just due to the length.
All right.
Any other comments? Councilmember Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. Did Texas Drainage do wards two and three?
They did.
And y'all had good luck with them?
Very, very good work, yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number three, please?
Council considered a resolution authorizing the city manager to water contract to Viking Painting LLC of La Vista, New Nebraska, for the Southwest Elevated Storage Tank Rehabilitation Project. Mr. Buck Koyak.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number three. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor? Is there any discussion? Mayor Protim?
I think we had discussed this earlier. This just paint, didn't we discuss maybe putting Beaumont's emblem up there or all the state championships from Beaumont up there or something like that?
Yes, sir, we had a conversation and we agreed to put the city logo in the appropriate city colors on the tower once it's finished rehabilitation.
So that's the blue and green?
Blue and green, yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comment? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number four, please?
Council considered a resolution to support an application for a state historical designation for the George O'Brien Millard statue located at 500 Main Street.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number four. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor? Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you. At this time, a citizen comment, if you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip, hand it to the clerk. We'll call your name when it's time for you to speak. And your three minutes will be timed by the clerk. Thank you.
Kenneth Earls, 1265 Condon, Beaumont, Texas.
I'm going to talk about lobbying and how it affects one of the most important cities in America and a county that has three petroleum plants. We should have five lobbyists in Washington, DC. We should ask for what we want and they should give it to us. 40% of all gas products come from this region. That river, the Nages River and Sabine River, we should demand that they widen it. And they will do it for one reason. In the future, China is threatening war. We need to get those ships, super tankers, into this port to make sure petroleum and gas is headed toward that region. Our navy is going to need it. Our president has told us that we're supportive of Taiwan, Hong Kong, and all the other people that are supporting us. Our product need to be there pronto. We need to be able to transport our military there because there is going to be that time when our grandchildren are going to have to fight that war. And we need this river and those things done. The next thing is dealing with term limits. I believe each of your council members should be elected for six years, not two years. We waste our money, we waste our time. You should be on board for 24/7, 365 days a year. And you should be paid commensurate with the time that you're working. These things that we're discussing is a no-brainer. The cities that are more popular, move things advertently and make sure that the citizens receive what they need are those types of cities. I would like to see that charter proposal reflect that. I don't know how much we would have to pay for council members. If it's $200,000 or $250,000, it's worth it. For the mayor, it may be a little bit more, but it's worth it.
Finish your sentence.
I'm going to speak. I need two more minutes.
I can't allow that, Earls, but I'll let you finish your sentence.
It's too important. The things that you do is too important. From the thing that I said about widening this river, you need to be on board. And the next council that come, they need to be aware of the things that need to occur in this county and this region of Texas, of America. Thank you.
Mr. Earls, appreciate you.
Addie Allen, 9695, grass Beaumont, Texas.
Mayor, Council, City Manager, one thing I'd like before I even talk is I know that the mayor and the city council can allow extended time. Certain people get it, certain people don't. I don't know when this is going to stop. I've heard other people get time extended. So I would like to see that happen. And it's happening every council meeting. I have a pretty good track record of being here. So there's some disparity in who speaks for the finish of their sentence or the finish of their thought process. The city charter appointments, I know that it has to be people that I know that it has to be people that are knowledgeable, but there are people that have been in Beaumont a long time, our city fathers. I don't know that they were all educated or not. But I would like to think that when these people are appointed, if you can open it up for volunteers and then you can peruse through and see who can and won't because a lot of people don't even wanna deal with it. But I know that that could probably happen. I would probably volunteer. The voting problems, and I'm so glad you're talking about the wording because the last time that we had a a large vote for ordinances, et cetera, there was not enough time given for citizens to understand what they were voting on. Unless they had si- uh council people, and I heard one of the councilmen say, you know, can I can I send an email or whatever? So I know some of you are concerned, maybe all of you are. But then town hall meetings or whatever, if you're gonna put something on November ballot, not thirty days before. That's unfair because the wording, a lot of times, I think is on purpose to confuse you. I don't know. And my voting record is pretty good. Standing water ditching, in the last ditching project, my area was ditched. I wanna know what employee checks on contractors. I have standing water all the time in front of my house. So the follow-up is what I think is important. You know, you can have phase one, phase two, phase three. We had a survey. We have driveways that's nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. And who is privy to getting it done correctly because the water is not flowing? And I don't care that you say over five years or whatever. We all pay taxes and we don't wanna be bitten by mosquitoes, you know? Standing water is not good. So I would ask that, you know, the questions that are posed to you today, please be answered, just like wetlands. And I know I see some of you writing. So I appreciate you and I hope that if you do win, that we'll have a hyphen of country inches council. If you don't win, I hope the next people will. Thank you for your service and I'm sincere about my my comments.
Thank you.
Ingrid Bell, forty-nine, eighty-five. I'm not sure what road, Plant Road, I'm sorry, Plant Road, Beaumont, Texas.
Can I do a show and tell? I have pictures to pass around.
You can pass, give them to the clerk.
Whenever I'm in this room, I'm usually dancing in zumba, so I feel like jumping up and dancing. My name is Ingrid Bell. I was born in Jamaica. My mother took me to England when I was eleven and I went to nursing school there. Then I went to midriff school and then I went to the University of London and studied education. Gave that up and came here, worked at St. Elizabeth Hospital, MASH. And then I retired in from UTMB in two thousand fifteen. So I've lived in Beaumont for a long time. I live on Plant Road. Behind my house, there were trees during the fall, the deers would come out. And the reason my mother took us to England was because she was ambitious and she passed that ambition on to me. So I believe in progress and I believe people need to move ahead. But my patience, probably when I told them to stop screaming and push, they might think I was being mean to them. But I do it for the good. I don't think having my property flooded, as you can see from the pictures, ambition is good, but you don't do it at the expense of other people. So am I being flooded because somebody wants to buy my property and have me gone? It's not gonna happen. So what is the purpose of flooding the property? The first time it was done, we went to the property owner. We waited, actually, it was during Holy Week. We waited until the Monday and we went to his property and he came and visited us and we were real excited when he told us he would take care of business. By the Friday, the fourteenth or the fifteenth, there was nothing done. The rain came last weekend and you can see the result. I was running to the back of my property, to the front, because the water I thought was going to come in my bedroom. And it also ran to the front to where you can see the mud. We thought the ditches were going to stay flooded as it full as it was moving up into my driveway. So again, I'm asking, what are my rights? Am I being flooded because they want to buy my property? Or am I being flooded because there wasn't enough planning to design a drainage system before they started piling dirt back there? The first time the trees were knocked down two years ago, we had a problem with hogs. They would come around to the front of our property and tear it up. After the hogs left, we couldn't shoot them. I called the city and asked, can I shoot the hogs? Only if they confront me, they say, use a bow and arrow. Well, I'll probably shoot myself in the foot with a bow and arrow, but I can use a gun and a long gun pretty good. I've been to the training. But after the hogs and the trees were down, now we have a pile of dirt behind us and we're being flooded. Don't let me start doing zumba with that music now. Thank you for listening to me and that those are my questions and I hope something can be done.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Can you state your address one more time, please?
Your your address again?
Forty-nine, eighty, forty-nine, eighty-five Plant Road, Beaumont.
Forty-nine, eighty-five?
Plant Road.
Plant Road. Okay, your pictures?
Okay.
Will be on the end.
If if you stay after the meeting, we'll talk to you.
Thank you.
Mary Guillory, fifty-oh-five Plant Road, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Guillory. And we have a problem. And we need help. I am a registered voter and I pay taxes. On the eighth of this month, for the first time ever, my property was flooded. I have been at this residence for over thirty-plus years. I've been through the storms, the wind, the rain, natural disasters, everything, and never been flooded. All the water that came through was clear water and it disappeared. I have mud and water flowing through my property. I have a storage building in the back sitting underwater. There's water everywhere. Mosquitoes, snakes, whatever. It came up to my slab about this much. Our property line is here. They did this to us. He came out and dug a ditch behind four, the four of us that are flooded. It's enough to sit six bodies in. It's full of water as of today. I made a call on the eighth. Called on the tenth to find out who I need to talk to, the builders that has the sign out front. I called engineering. I've called, uh, called them on the tenth. The inspector came out on the twelfth from engineering, said it was nothing they could do. Today, an inspector came out. I saw him out my kitchen window and I asked him, could I speak with him? He said, sure. I said, what are you doing? He says, I'm taking pictures. I said, I have a question for you. Are you familiar with the swell? He said, yes, I've been here over thirty-some years. I know what a swell is. He said, if you look far back on your property, on their property, there's a retention. He said, the swell was in the water back to that retention and not to us. It's unfair for them to destroy our property that we have worked and taken care of all these years. They're sending it to us. We're not sending anything to them. Anytime you see mud and water flooding out your property after thirty-some years, something is going on. I have photos as well. I'm asking for help. That's what I'm asking for. It needs to be done ASAP. We got a rain coming Thursday. I don't know what's gonna happen or what can be done, but we need your help. We need you to help us. The engineer, the owner of the property, said he has his own engineers. And I said, the only engineer I know is the city of Beaumont. So that's why I made a call to them. I called the Drainage District. They came out immediately, checked it out and said, hey, you're fine on our end.
Can I have a few minutes? Finish your, finish your sentence.
Okay, said you're fine on our end. And I called my councilman, Samuel. He came out and looked at it. We, all four residents, one was here early, she had to leave, but we all have photos. We're stressed out and there's water there. And if any one of you take the time out to just come out and look and see what is being done.
Bart, can you speak with her?
Right, we'll be here after the meeting.
After the meeting, they will speak with you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Albert Harrison, twelve-forty Ashley, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, other members, staff members, and President. I'm here to basically complain about a issue. In eleven-hundred block of Evelyn, E-V-A-L-O-N. I have lived at eleven-sixty-three Evelyn since nineteen fifty-five. The house was torn down in approximately nineteen eighty-two. I still own the property. Although it's a vacant land, I do plan to build another house there at some time in the future. I know I'm seventy-five years old, but I still plan on doing that. My issue today basically involves the city in the process of mopping out and cleaning out the ditches in eleven-hundred block of Evelyn. In the process of them doing that, I saw the individual that was operating the clean-out machine. I asked him specifically, the concrete at the end of the of the walkway across the ditch as a sidewalk has my baby sister's name on it, has the year that my daddy bought the property, nineteen fifty-five. It also has the year that the sidewalk or concrete was placed there, nineteen seventy. I asked him not to remove it. He did not remove it. He did go on ahead in the process of mopping out the ditch in that area. There was a pipe under the concrete. He pulled the pipe out, saying it was plugged, it was plugged up. I have no problem with that, except to say that it cost the city more money to replace another pipe there. He could have just called the blowout and just blow the pipe out. And would have cleared the issue up. But they had to come back and put another pipe there and put additional concrete there to make a complete walkway again. My real complaint now is that in the process of them doing that, it has now made water very stagnant and it's settling there. It's not flowing anywhere. Also, as I stated, I've lived there since nineteen fifty-five. I was always told and knew that the water flowed to the east. The individuals that were digging it out said now the water flows to the west. All I'm saying to y'all is that the water is not flowing anywhere. Plus, they need to finish the job. Across from eleven-eighteen, they did not finish mopping out the ditch. They just left the grass there completely. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And we'll get this forwarded on.
Thank you. Oh, excuse me, one more thing. I would have brought pictures, but I would like for y'all to go and see it.
Thank you.
Dylan Richardson, forty-seven, forty-five, seventy-five North Major Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good evening. My name is Dylan Richardson. I intend on finishing the piece I began a couple of weeks ago. First, we'd like to discuss term limits. As I understand it, only one of you has spoken in support of term limits, which begs the question of why? Why does the council consider themselves to be above the standard that is held at the highest levels of our government in America? Let me indulge you all on why there are term limits in this country. George Washington, our first president, who most assuredly would have been elected for his third term, decided that presidents should only be serving a maximum of two terms so as to not fall into the same tyranny that they faced in Great Britain. Many of you are in your own unique way tyrants of change. It would appear that many of you cherish the title, spotlight, and being surrounded by the crowds of sycophants that many of you are, so much so that you've been willing to grandstand throughout numerous terms, even decades for some, simply for the optics. I would like to plant a seed, a seed of a view differing from this philosophy of a city official. If there is not drastic change one hundred years from now, people will look back on and study how much of this council before me led the city of Beaumont to its knees and to the edge of irrelevance through your inaction. I also implore each of you to reach out to individual firemen and to the union in regards to solving the matters at hand. Council has been misled in the past by many advocates on the other side. Many of you have posed as eager to solve the problem when our city manager created an unsanctioned organization intended to undermine the outcomes of pending litigation. To those of you, I say shame on you. I will attend all future meetings and share my opinions on respective topics. To finish, I do feel as though my consistent attendance will not be shared by at least one of you who will be replaced by someone more qualified for the position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Claudette Colbert, thirty-nine, oh-two, Congress, Beaumont, Texas.
Hello. My name is Claudette Colbert and I'm coming because I'm being stressed out, terrorized, falsely accused of things that I haven't done. They said that that I have been in jail, never been in jail. And I'm being abused with chemicals and radar, with with big lights over my home that's burning my home, water is in my home every morning when I wake up. I don't, I can't plant any flowers or anything because it it'll all be burned up from that big light that be following, that be over, over my home. And I've had cancer twice. I've had a stroke twice from being terrorized by saying I'm on, uh, let me see what they call that, surveillance. I never thought that they would do people, human beings like they are doing, and children being those people homes that they are terrorizing and saying they are under surveillance. And most of the time, those people haven't done anything. I've never been in jail, never hurt anybody. I'm a Christian and I've been a Christian for over fifty years. And to say that they say I'm on drugs because it's drug addicts in my neighborhood. They got women fighting and cussing all around my house trying to act like it's me. They got the drug addicts walking around my house acting like I'm on drugs because they are getting on from, they they, I I heard that these people are doing that because they're under so, under probation. So they they don't get, so it takes away from their probation if they terrorize the people in the neighborhood that they got under surveillance, who haven't done anything but try to live and raise their kids. I'm coming in behalf of my children. I have, I have three kids. Never been in jail. They all finished college and work and they don't live in Beaumont, but they are being harassed too. I have four grandchildren. They all in college, never done nothing to nobody, being harassed too because they are my children and my grandchildren. And I think about other children that have to go through this. Living terrorized with with chemicals, you can't breathe. Right now, I have a headache. My eyes be burning. I can't breathe at night. I go from one room to the next and whatever this is that follows me, that, you know, where I'm just going through terrorism. Water all be in my yard. They put a sewage tank in my backyard where all I do is mail sewage and I've been there for fifty years. I'm a, been, I was born here in Beaumont and I have a family, a big family in Beaumont. We have, we always try to help people. We never tried to do anything against children or anything. I used to come and help the children under probation and stuff. Being a, a mother of church and also being, uh, going around helping people. I give, I don't take nothing from nobody. They've accused me of stealing. I've never stole anything from anybody, I give. Sometimes I don't have, but I give them because I like to see them. I don't think life is worth nothing if you have everything you can, and you can give to somebody else to help them.
Thank you, Ms. Colbert. We appreciate you coming.
Okay. I just wanted to say that my home is being abused by the cars and the trucks that's terrorizing. Where water comes out of my house, my, and I can't even, you know, like my rooftop.
If you, if you speak to Mr. Barkoviac after the meeting, he'll be able to speak with you.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Charlie Crabbe, 928 East Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor Meehan. Council and Mr. City Manager and Staff. I brought a new, uh, uh, vehicle with me today. I don't really need it, but it was given to me for Christmas. And I'd rather have had a fishing rod, maybe a couple of those nice fishing shirts. But they, my people thought I needed this. And it's working pretty good because you see the large wheels and it goes over rough terrain good. So a hunter or fisherman that fishes the riverbanks or stuff, it'd come in handy. But today, I was, uh, really going to talk about the homeless. Of course, our problem here in Beaumont, and we've got, of course, homeless have several categories. The mentally ill, the alcoholics and the drug addicts, and the classified and the other. So I would like to see the city try to get some type of, they've talked about the small, small housing. And it seems like it's coming up that the, uh, those shipping containers, those 60 footers make nice, uh, buildings for an individual or maybe two individuals. And I've been able to design one, the inside. And if Mr. Barkoviac would give me a designer, we can, uh, design the inside. And I think the city can, uh, build those out in their, if they have craftsmen that have spare time. And, and that's a rare thing, spare time. Charter changes, that, uh, that's a big item. And again, I say if it, if it doesn't, if it's not broken, just don't fix it. Just ignore those charter items that, that don't affect anybody. Now ditch, ditching culverts, I'd like to see culvert, uh, ditches ditch maybe three quarters to an inch below the culvert so that the, there'll be very little water left in the ditch because that is a problem around the city where the, the, uh, they ditch below the culvert so you, you have years of, of water standing. I don't know who, uh, uh, let's see, maintains the ditch out on the Uomo Road around to Major Drive, but water stands there months after any kind of rain. Uh, the gentleman had a very good, uh, comments about the, uh, the Nature River Channel about widening it and, uh, excuse me, deepening it for the industrial area we have. And I hate to see the ladies on Plant Road and their flooding problem. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Crabbe.
I'll be around if anybody wants to look at this.
Thank you.
Thomas Hunter, 6652 Lexington Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Take your time, sir.
Good afternoon to everyone. I hope everyone can hear me well. My name is Thomas Hunter, better known as Tom the Blues Man Hunter.
Tom the what?
Blues Man Hunter.
Okay.
Yes. I was a blues man up, up until a few years ago. Travel and tour the world, recorded, stuff like that. Radio DJ out of Port Arthur for about six years. But anyway, what I'm here for today, and by the way, I'm a Navy veteran, six years of, uh, service. And I turned 80 years old in March. But, um, I still drive around the city. Not, don't go too far. If I need to go anywhere else, I'll get my daughter to take me. But, um, I drive around the city, my wife and I, and we go mainly to restaurants, pharmacies, doctor's offices, and places of business like this. Now, my problem here is what I'm talking about right now. The rampant abuse of the handicap parking spots. I mean, it's just, they're parking with impunity. I don't see anybody getting tickets, nobody doing anything. Today, I don't, this is my first time in this building. So I parked way down the end of the street over there. I couldn't find a, um, place to get in here. I don't know if anybody was abusing the handicap spots or not. But I do see little small sports cars, uh, brand new cars, little small cars. I know these cars are not driven by handicapped people. And even in the handicapped spaces, I look for driver, for license tags that indicate that maybe they are handicapped in some kind of way. Lots of times, I see that they're not. They're not even hanging the, uh, green tags, blue tags from their mirrors. And they're, they're getting away with it. And people like me, speaking on, for myself actually, I need those spots. It's hard for me to walk. I walk with assistance, and I do have, I saw my doctor today. And I want to get a, a better, um, walking assistant, um, for myself. But, um, I, I would like to say briefly, just, just to compare how it can be remedied to, uh, to the city of Austin. Most of you, I'm sure lots of you have mentioned, uh, city of Austin. I lived there for about 10 or 12 years. And they have, and by me being a blues man, I played around the Sixth Street area, uh, for a long time in Austin. Everybody, I'm sure everybody's familiar with that area. But, um, there were tow trucks. They had no authority to tow them. Okay, I'd like to finish this and I'll, uh, relinquish it to someone else. There were tow trucks that were designated to just drive around and look for cars or trucks into, uh, in parking spots that were not, that were designated for handicap parking. And they were towed, they were towed. And, um, everybody is aware that if you do park in the wrong spot in Austin, Texas, your car will be towed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
And I hope that we can get some consideration on this right away.
Thank you, and thank you for your service to our country.
Thank you, you're very welcome.
The Pharaoh Richard, 5275 Parkview Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, everyone. I came for two reasons, and the first reason is, when I was 15 years old, Oprah Winfrey came to Beaumont, Texas. She didn't shake hands with anyone, but for some reason, she beckons me to come to, towards her to the stage. She shook my hand and she said, young lady, do great things. When I left Beaumont with $200 and my tuition was $20,000 a semester at Howard University in Chemical Engineering, I worked three jobs because I heard her voice, do great things. When I won the Miss Black World Pageant, after getting my master's degree in psychology, Coretta Scott King became my mentor and took me to Africa. By passing through England, I met British Prime Minister Tony Blair. He told me to do great things. I went to President Mandela's home. He took a picture with no one. He told me to do great things. President Robin Mugabe was a dictator. He took a picture with no one. He told me to do great things. So my question is, Alexis Morris is the first young lady to make it to the WNBA. I tried out in 98 under John Thompson, the legendary historical coach. My question is, I only saw four council members. Beaumont United, three-time state presence, I only saw four council members. And I'm not badgering, I'm not badgering. But if it had been a robbery, if it had been a drive-by, if it had been a theft, if it had been a, a baby mama domestic violence, oh yeah, let's talk about it, let's talk about it. So I ask, as representation of us as a community as a whole, there are obligations. I understand we have council members who have sick relatives. I understand all of that. But what are we saying to the young people if we don't celebrate them? If we don't affirm? Do you know how incredible, after 41 years, for them to do a three-peat at the same campus that became a part of integration? Do you know how wonderful it is for a young lady to say, I'm going for the WNBA? And she made it? She deserves a key to the city. No disrespect to Megan and what she's done. I don't agree with her lifestyle, it's not my choice, but Houston can think enough to give her a key to the city. I'm confused. Let every man search his own heart. You want to sit here at the table and I applaud you because this is not easy. I applaud you. And that leads to my last comment. I personally say if the highest leader gets a term limit, I feel like the council should. But then as I contemplated and meditated and went before the Holy Spirit, I said, you know what? One second. The voters decide. I say yes, but if a voter says, I want you to represent me because you are advocating for the needs of my ward, then who am I to take the vote away from them? Your, every single ward has different needs. And if they feel like you are performing their needs, who are we to take their voice and say no? Because who knows what will come next? That's just my opinion. I thank you for your time, I thank you for your ears, and I just ask everyone to search your heart. These children need affirmation. They need affirmation. And I'm gonna be real, y'all could have did better.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
At this time, I will allow council members to make public comment. And I will start with Councilmember Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing I kind of want to address is, uh, we had a citizen come to the podium today and she spoke about our lobbyists. I think it would be a great idea that we do need to get our lobbyists down to the city of Beaumont at least once a year and do a quarterly, an annually report to let the citizen know what we're actually invested in and if we're getting a proper return on it. So I do agree with that. Uh, the second thing I want to address is, I really do, and I really would like to see our staff or someone get out there to that Plant Road area and address that. You know, I can only imagine, you know, coming out of my house and seeing the water and the rain that we just recently had coming that far. I definitely think we need to figure out a way and get somebody out there to address it and make these citizens understand that we have a concern and obligation to get there. And Councilman Samuel, appreciate you for going out there. Uh, the third thing is handicap spots. I know that's a law enforcement thing, and normally when we bring things to law enforcement's attention, they normally address it. So I'm pretty sure Officer Carol's in here, she's gonna make the proper connections and we definitely need to get that addressed. Uh, the fourth thing I want to talk about is, although we grading the ditches, I still think it's a great thing that we're moving in that direction. But I think based upon a citizen's concerns or complaints, we need to go back and assess that sitting water. I understand that with the three inches in the culvert and that magnitude, but if we're spending that revenue, I want to make sure, you know, we're getting the best return on our investment. Uh, the fifth thing I want to talk about is the actual Alexis Moore celebration. The reality is, we always say, you know, we talk about presidents, we're setting in the city of Beaumont. But, you know, I went back and researched, and when we talk about setting presidents, our city is roughly 130-plus years old. And I didn't see a, a female from Beaumont win a national basketball NCAA championship. But it's not just about her winning, it's about the pride in Beaumont. It's about what all she endured, what she went through, and her legacy that she left. She might not always did everything perfect, she failed. But the reality is, she's an example to all young children. You can make mistakes, you can fall, but you can also rise to the top and be extremely successful. And I stand on it, and I want to say I'm extremely proud of Alexis. I am proud of the city to step up and do something for her. You know, it's up to us as leaders to set the precedence. It's up to leaders, us as leaders to set the standards. And I think it's extremely important that we as in leadership, we need to set the bar on how we take pride and how we move our community forward. So I think, I don't mind that it ain't happened in the past, but I think now you're seeing we're doing things differently. And I want to thank everybody who came out to support, even the ones who couldn't make it. And lastly, it's something that was mentioned, and I think is a huge win for the city of Beaumont. It was in our CONCIT agenda, library grant funding, a summer reading program for our youth. I think we don't celebrate and talk about the positive things enough at Beaumont. And that's something that's extremely positive. We have literacy issues in Beaumont. And the city stepping up and doing this program, that's something we need to be extremely thankful for with the library department because they're going above and beyond to talk to our children and work with our children. Thank you for your comments, Mayor. I'd just like to take notes and address everything that kind of was brought up in a nutshell.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner, and Councilmember Newell.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. Manager, I know we can't talk back and forth much on this Plant Road, uh, situation that was brought up today. But I can't speak from a contractor's standpoint. And a, a developer and a contractor has the responsibility to make sure they're not pushing water on other people's properties, as does the city when they're doing the plan reviews and going through the engineering process. Uh, so I hope the city can get, uh, take a deep look into this, uh, quickly because I know everybody sitting up here would be mad as all get out of that was taking place on our properties too. One other quick comment, I had the opportunity to go to Waco, Texas, uh, here this past week and, uh, spend a little time around, uh, some of the river development that Waco has just recently completed. And I strongly encourage, uh, whoever has the opportunity to get up there and take a look at what they've done. So I think there's some real opportunities for us here in Beaumont, uh, mimicking some of the stuff that they've just recently completed.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Samuel.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I thank, uh, Ms. Gilley and Ms. Bell, uh, for coming over and expressing that. We have addressed it, we'll visit again after the meeting is over. Uh, I think, uh, Mr. Barkoviac, as well as the city manager, they are aware of what's going on out there. And they are attempting to address, to see how there can be a quick resolution and, uh, work on what will happen in the end. Uh, so with that, um, I'll visit with you after the meeting is over. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Felschar.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just remember that the city election is coming up, early voting, April 24th to May 2nd, and election day, May the 6th. Also, this time's a little different because on Sunday, the 30th, from 12, from noon to 5, that Sunday afternoon on the 30th, the polls will be open. So that's a, that's a new thing for us, uh, as a city. So please make a note to vote. Remember that out of 71,000 registered voters in the last, uh, city election, between 15, 18% voted. And so please come out and vote, it's so important that each citizen casts their vote. So thank you for voting, and, uh, remember April the 24th to May 2nd and then May 6th. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Garrett.
This Friday is my wife's birthday. Her doctors say this will be the last birthday that she celebrates. I pray that they are wrong, but I know that everything happens in accordance with God's plan. It is not surprising to me that Allison has faced this illness with incredible strength and braveness, dignity and grace. When people call or visit her, she always asks about them and how they are doing, demonstrating a kindness and concern for others that define who she is. Almost everyone knows that Allison Gitz is the elected tax assessor and voter registrar for Jefferson County. She has three offices in Jefferson County and is responsible for over 60- and is responsible for over sixty employees. Allison was first elected in 2014 and is tax collector is responsible for collecting property taxes for twenty-eight jurisdictions, collecting hotel occupancy taxes, conducting delinquent tax sales, issuing beer and wine licenses, issuing tax permits for coin-operated machines, and issuing titles and registration for more than two hundred thousand vehicles annually. As voter registrar, she leads an office that has registered over a hundred and fifty thousand people to vote in Jefferson County, maintains the accuracy of the voter registration rolls, appoints individuals to become volunteer deputy registrars, and assists poll workers during the early voting period and Election Day. If all the above was not enough, by law, Allison sits on the board of the Jefferson County Appraisal District and was chairman of the J-CAD Board in 2019 and 2020. And when County Judge Jeff Brannick decided to create the position of Public Information Officer for Jefferson County in 2019, who did he ask to fulfill those duties? Allison Nathan Gatz. Allison took seven different classes and passed each examination to become Jefferson County's first Public Information Officer. Immediately thereafter, Allison was the county spokesperson for tropical storm Emilda and the TPC explosion. Subsequently, she was the official spokesman for Hurricanes Laura, Marco and Delta in 2020, the winter storm disaster in 2021, and of course, COVID. Somehow, while performing all of the duties that I just read, she found time to make the following improvements to the Jefferson County Tax Office. She implemented a queuing system in two out of her three offices. She installed a camera system with security monitors in all of her offices. She created the first website for the tax office. She redesigned the tax statements to be more legible and easier to read. She made it possible to get your car auto registrations renewed at HEB and Kroger, so you would not have to go to the tax office. She made it possible for people to get their vehicle inspections and auto registration done in one location for participating businesses. She created an interested buyer program to get county-owned properties back on the tax rolls. She had active shooter training conducted in all of her offices. And she oversaw the expansion and the addition of a drive-through window at the Mid-County Tax Office. During her time in office, Allison has continued her professional education and earned the Professional County Collector Certification, the County Tax Office Professional Certification, and the Professional County Assessor Collector Certification. With all of the above, it is not a surprise that in October of 2021, she was named the Tax Assessor of the Year for the whole state of Texas, two hundred and fifty-four counties. She reached the highest echelon that could be achieved in her job. Two months later, she was diagnosed with brain cancer. Life can be filled with cruel twists and turns, and it would be easy to be bitter about the sudden turn of events. But Allison will simply say, "It is what it is." She is at peace with herself because she knows, and I know, and I want the world to know, that she has lived a life devoted to making the world a better place. How? Allison Nathan Gatz has served as president of fifteen local civic organizations in her life. Fifteen! They include the Fire Museum of Texas, the Beaumont Children's Museum, the Beaumont Heritage Society, the Beaumont Ballet Theater Guild, the Dallin West Neighborhood Association, the Gallery Guild for the Art Museum, Garth House, Golden Triangle Republican Women, the Jefferson County Bar Auxiliary, Jefferson County Texas X's, the Southeast Texas Tennis Association, the Symphony of Southeast Texas, the Symphony League of Southeast Texas, Temple Emmanuel, and Young Audiences. She has chaired huge fundraisers, such as Le Grand Ball benefiting the Music and Arts Department at Lamar University, and the Cattle Barons Ball benefiting the American Cancer Society. If Allison was not the president of a local civic organization, she was probably on the board of directors. Those organizations include All Saints Parents Associations, On-Yacht House, Crime Stoppers of Southeast Texas, Family Services of Southeast Texas, Gift of Life, Kelly High School, Friends of the Arts at Lamar University, some other place, the Texas Section of the U.S. Tennis Association, and the United Way. Allison is a graduate at the University of Texas, Leadership Beaumont, and the Citizens Police Academy. She was a then-leader, a cub master, and still serves on the Advisory Board of the Three Rivers Council, the Boy Scouts of America. But even with all of the above, I still have not mentioned Allison's greatest accomplishments, those that she values above all else. She has been a devoted daughter to her parents, Jerry and Iris, an incredible sister to her brother Earl, an outstanding mother to her children, Lee and Buffen, and a doting grandmother to grandmothers Sadie and Alice. To me, Allison has been a loving wife, confidant, and best friend. So why have I spent the several last minutes, last several minutes using the bully pulpit to talk about my wife? Because I think it is appropriate and right to honor people while they are living, as much or more so than when they are gone. Tell the people that you love how you feel about them today, because tomorrow might be too late. Today, I honor my wife Allison. Baby, I love you now and forever. Happy early birthday, and I pray for many more to celebrate with you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Protim Doria.
Mayor, I just want to say, like you and your family always still in our prayers and always will be.
Thank you.
Need more people like your wife.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank Councilman Turner and staff and everyone that was involved with the celebration for Alexis Morris and Beaumont United. It was very well attended. Thank you, Mayor, for giving her the key to the city. And thank everybody that came out. And as for Mayor Council Society, I just made three years as a council survivor myself. So I'll be attending and walk also, Mayor. And that's all I have.
Thank you. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. My regards go out to everyone. A couple of notes. We had a meeting with the Beaumont and the School District, with the city managing her staff. It's one of our joint meetings. One of the things we had talked about was following up on those goals, joint goals. But also the city manager and the superintendent meeting. So we had a meeting. And two things that came out of that along with, and we'll be bringing forth those goals is, BISD and the city of Beaumont is going to do a joint job for on Monday, May the eighth, at Paul Brown Auxiliary Gym, BISD campus. And the people that will be participating will be BISD seniors. So sixty-five BISD seniors will be coming to that meeting. And we will be presenting eligible jobs from the School District and from the city of Beaumont, job openings, where we can give those seniors a job. And that will include jobs like our police department, fire department, and EMS. They are eligible for those jobs. So we're going to work to get those sixty-five seniors a job. Also, on May thirteenth, there's going to be a community-wide, city-wide cleanup between BISD and the city at different campuses, et cetera, around town. So we're doing that as a joint project. Just a couple of notes on finances, our budget for the years. It's, we're tracking well expenditures versus revenues. Revenues are running ahead of expenditures for this time of the year. We're actually doing better on investments, because, believe it or not, with interest rates going up, we've gotten over about twelve-hundred more dollars in interest revenues versus last year. We've gotten one million six-eight-seven versus two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand last year. So there was a positive side to interest rates going up for us as a city. Basically, again, all of our funds are in good shape. And we've accrued about thirteen-point-eight-five percent more in revenues than was budgeted for this year. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Boone, please.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Ellis.
I have nothing, Mayor.
Our city attorney.
Briefly, I'd just like to say to Councilman Gatz, you failed to mention that Allison was an avid volunteer. And she spoke for my Leadership Beaumont class on the importance of volunteering. So I want to thank you and thank her for both sharing her time with our community and all she did in her capacity as our elected tax assessor, but just also what she did in her personal time to better the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barkoviac.
No comment, Mayor.
And Mr. Bruce Sore.
Just keep Allison in prayer, Councilman Gatz, and you, and your family.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bell and Mrs. Gillery, I've spoken to both of you. And hopefully, after the meeting, you will be able to speak to Mr. Barkoviac. And hopefully, that conversation will lead to a solution, a resolution to your problem. And I do apologize for what you're going through. As I stated to you earlier, I personally understand just the fear of even thinking of your house flooding. So hopefully, we could get a resolution to your problem. Also, Mr. Hunter, on the handicap parking, unfortunately, there are citizens that do not respect people and do not respect handicapped people especially. I can tell you that our police officers do write tickets for those. There are always municipal court for such acts. But we will address to make sure that maybe they can step up and be a little more aggressive in policing the handicapped, because those tickets are two-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred dollars. And so anyone that would rather not walk and pay two-hundred-and-fifty or five-hundred dollars to inconvenience someone that really need those parking spots, we would hope that they would get a ticket. So thank you for even addressing that. On this past weekend, there were a lot of celebrations. There was a fiftieth celebration. I did a welcome for the Lamar University Kappa fraternity, their fiftieth-year anniversary. And of course, Councilmember Turner is a part of that fraternity. And they were at council on last week. And so they are celebrating fifty years of being on the Beaumont-Lamar University campus. Also, our very own city manager, Mr. Kenneth Williams, was the speaker on this Friday night at the One Hundred Black Men of Beaumont annual banquet. And I did sit with he and his wife. Thank you, Mr. Williams, for addressing that crowd. And on this weekend, it's the seventy-fifth year of the Nature's River Festival. So there's a parade this weekend, and there are so many events going on. Please get out and support the seventy-fifth year of the Nature's River Festival. On last week, I did the welcome and read the proclamation for the unveiling of the king, King Seventy-Fifth. It's a long time. And as I stated when they started out, it was just a conversation and just a little small gathering. And who would have ever thought, seventy-five years later, it would evolve into what it has? But it's a big city celebration and an annual one that bring out a lot of people. So please get out and celebrate that with the Nature's River Festival. Also, our lobbyist, who is Chris Giglio, he does have a name that's associated with local people here, but he is not affiliated with anyone from the local family. And I would like to say that we do get a monthly report. And he is, sometimes Chris know more that's going on in Beaumont than I do. So he's very, very involved in Beaumont. And he is a great lobbyist. There are people that would love to have him and often tell me, if we ever let him go, they'll grab him in a minute. So quite proud to have Chris represent us. But I would have to say, it would be nice that we make that report public. And so hopefully, we could do that in the near future. And so that citizens can see that their tax dollars are being spent and where they're being spent. In addition to that, there was a comment that was stated about different people coming up to the mic to speak. For the most part, I try to be as consistent as I possibly can. If you're in the middle of a sentence, I would like for people's thoughts to be completed. Sometimes if... Sometimes it can't be stated in just a few seconds. But for the most part, I try to be consistent. But without just cutting someone off and not allowing them to complete their thought, there is some leniency. So we say three minutes. I could always just stop it at three minutes. But when you're in the middle of a sentence or a thought, I just try to allow just that extra time. And sometimes it may go a little bit over. But for the most part, I just want to make sure that the citizens can complete their thoughts. And when they can't, we're always available after the meeting to make comment or if you would like to say something in addition to what we've said. But on a great note, General Land Office handed out grants. And Beaumont did receive a million-dollar grant that I attended on Friday morning. And so that's another million dollars that can go to sewer and drainage. And overall, Jefferson County received eleven million dollars in grant funding from the General Land Office on Friday. You may have seen the article on the front page of the Beaumont Enterprise. But that was a great grant that we received on Friday. And again, this, next Monday, early voting does start. Please get out, exercise your right to vote. It is your God-given right, so please get out and vote. It's a big election that will affect each and every one of us. So please vote. Mike, we have prayed for you. We've prayed for Allison. Continue to ask about her. We've also prayed for the Nathan family. And we will continue to lift you and your family and the Nathan family up in prayer. But that was a beautiful tribute to your wife.
Thank you, Mayor.
Beautiful tribute. And so at this time, we're going to recess to executive session. Thank you so very much for coming. And go out and spread the love. Thank you.